Good evening, my name is Philip Wentz and I'm Chair for this meeting. So we may now welcome you all to the 26th of April 2022 meeting of the Planning and Community Committee of Woodley. So I may advise all attendees of the council who served the right to record or broadcast this meeting. Anybody attending the meeting will by virtue consent have their audio recorded for this purpose. The town council has consulted by Wokingham Borough Council on planning applications within Woodley that the final decision of approved or refused is taken by Wokingham Borough Council. We will notify Wokingham Borough Council if committed views which may include any comments and concerns expressed by members of the community affected by the application. So if anyone has any comments to make on any of the planning applications, then they need to formally write or send an email to Wokingham Borough Council Planning Department as they will take the final decision on the application. Thank you. So if we can follow the agenda, there is the first one up, but he was compelled to apologize.
Yeah, we have apologies from councillors Chenk and Nakro.
Thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest? No? Okay. So item three on the agenda is the minutes of the Planning and Community Committee meeting held on the 29th of March, which is on page five. Has anybody got any questions to raise? Are we happy? Does someone propose a review?
Um, I'll propose.
Okay. So item four of these current planning applications, and I'll take it hopefully in the room. So the first one I added is 220866, which is One Dunbar Drive, which is the application for proposed change of use of amenity land to residential and construction of new boundary water side of property. Any comments? I would like to make one comment. Is whether or not in general we should actually consider the removal of amenity land to private accommodation as an acceptable or unacceptable? Full stop. Now, I appreciate that obviously there are some areas of Woodley where it's a bit late to worry about it. But certainly on new builds. Anyway, I'd welcome your comments on that. Carol?
I think with this particular one in Dunbar Drive, they are actually leaving some amenity space. And so I'm okay with that. I think it's when we lose all the amenity space and the boundary comes right up to the pavement or whatever. With that amenity space, that green is there for a reason to, you know, sort of aesthetic. So I think it does depend on each application to say no to everything is probably a little bit, could be a bit dodgy.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because this isn't the only one of that type of application. Who does the land belong to then?
That's a question.
Yeah.
It's never clear because sometimes the amenity land is actually owned by the property, but at the times it's owned by the Borough Council.
Yeah, I just don't think.
But the application from that one to say it was owned by the property, I mean, you're taking away for it, obviously.
Difficult, isn't it? If it was amenity, who's the, who's the, who's the amenity, is it? In principle, I don't really like the idea, but if everybody else agrees, then.
Could it be left over from the developer? It was the developer's land and it's never actually been.
It's possible.
Could be, could be.
I mean, certainly I'm against use of the amenity land being taken. Except in exceptional circumstances. And as Carol said, that one on Dunbar Drive, what they've got planned for that is actually quite tragic.
Alex, you want to do that?
Just a bit of concern about the loss of wildlife habitat. There are bushes and things there, obviously, tonnes have to be taken out. That would be my concern, principal concern. But yeah, I do have issues with people taking amenity land, you know, left, right and centre.
Right, so how do we want to pass this one? So I would have sensed we should pass it.
Can I just ask what state the land is in at the moment? I've not seen this. Very often if it's not being maintained and cut and looked after, it could not be better than it's going to have this solution.
There are photographs.
Yeah, there are photographs.
There's bushes and things.
It does show it's been maintained, but of course what we don't know, whether it's been maintained by the local authority, whether it's maintained by the household.
The impression on the comment that I got was it was being talked about at council.
Good work, yeah. Because doesn't their garage block stick out a little bit if you go further down the side road? So it could suggest that part of that is actually owned by the property. Sorry, I'll take, sorry, can we take a look? So all those in favour? All those against? Okay, so we're happy with that one. Item number two is 220867, which is 67 South Lake Crescent. This is the application for an erection of a single story perooro side extension following demolition of a lean-to. And my comments are that it's to remove the existing side lean-to, which only makes half of the house length, a replacement with a permanently built extension to the full length of the house. Loss of one parking space, but still adequate for property size. And the two other responses I've had are no comment and no objection. So does anybody have anything to say about that one?
No objection.
Are we happy with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to 220283, 21 Roxall Drive. Household application for the proposed single storey front and two storey side extension. Full width rear extension, part of the new rear extension is for a new bedroom at first floor level. The number of bedrooms remains at four. There's a front extension to take the building line across the four width of the house. And there is an assortment of projects in this area which is similar. And one neighbour has concerned about noise during the works, and that neighbour is backing on. But apart from that, there's been no criticism. Any comments? I've got another comment, big, but it seems okay. Do you want to make any comments on that one? Are we happy with that one? Okay. Next one is 220617, which is 15 Roxon Road. Application for an erection of a single storey front extension to create a porch. Erection of a single storey rear extension to version of the loft and insertion of a front dorma and a rear dorma plus two roof lights and a Juliet balcony. My comments are a full width rear extension, a new first floor with bedroom and dorma, move into three bedrooms, adequate parking on site, new front extension to create an entry porch to allow one front room to be reduced in size to permit a staircase to the new first floor. And the Juliet balcony appears to be flush with the full height window in the first floor door, so it's not, it's not protrude. And again, I've got no comment and no objections. So anybody want to say anything on that one? Are we happy with that one? Okay. 220659, which is Four Woodlands Close. Change of use of amenity land to residential and construction of a new boundary water side of property. My comments, this is a new build and changes to the boundary wall within the land owned by the building does not seem to be a problem. So want to alter amenity land which has been designed for a purpose to maintain good environmental management is an issue. Alex, you were first.
Yeah, I'm concerned about this. Obviously, he needs the people, he's the residents, he's had one parking place. That's the reason why this particular one needs a second. It's a precedent, I mean, it's a grand new development. They must have known when they bought the property that they get the one parking place. And yeah, I think this is, as I say, set a bad precedent for the rest of the estate. I don't think the amenity land should be given over in this way.
Okay, Carol?
Yeah, I think this is an example of they've taken amenity land and left nothing. And I would be against that. And added to that, it's the access to post driveway or parking if they close to junction, which I'd be concerned. So I'd recommend refusal on this one.
Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, so what's our view please? Refusal? Who knows the favourite refusal?
Loss of amenity land.
Yeah, refusal, yeah.
Yes, refusal, please. So 220899, this is 239 London Bridge Road. This is the one without any drawings until this afternoon, so I don't know if anybody else has had a chance to look at it. So I don't know if you want to discuss it now, I'll read out my comments. It's a replacement of an existing side garage with a new extension for kitchen, bathroom and utility, starting closer to the front and slightly wider than the rear of the house. This creates an additional bedroom at ground floor with other rooms reclassified altered. First floor loft space remains unaffected. There's an adequate running at the front for two cars. An existing garage which looks to be, probably doesn't look very new, it was just in the running. A bit tatty, and it's very close to the neighbour and it needs to maintain the required distance on the side as per the regulations. But if you want to have a look at it.
Can you see a bit of it?
20899.
What was your overall view then, Chenk and Shams?
I didn't think it was, I thought it was okay, but just a comment about the neighbour because the extension could be quite, quite close to the, to the boundary.
I'm happy to go with that.
I didn't have any other particular issue. The fact that they're bringing, they're taking the garage down and bringing that side slightly forward and a little bit further back, I didn't think it had much effect really.
Yeah, I gave it that one, okay. So his other houses have done the same, haven't they, now?
So my only comment, my only comment would be taking neighbours' comments into account as well. So if you're happy with that.
Yeah.
You've seen the orange lines at the right. Okay. And we've got 220894, which is 24 Redwood. Which is replacing the existing garage with a games room, bringing forward slightly to meet the existing doorways on the side, extending the rear across two thirds of the width of the house on both floors, move into six bedrooms. And the house is typical for this batch of houses, but the loss of parking and removal of the garage with the additional bedrooms is an issue. But if you look at this, you look at half a dozen, I think, of these houses, they've all been extending left, right, everywhere else. And obviously, they're all causing parking problems down there, but I guess because others have already been successful in their applications, I'm not sure what we can do. If we want to do anything about this one anyway. So I'd welcome any comments and what is got. I've got one comment about access from the highway. We think we need more details, which is Carol's intention. And obviously, six bedrooms and three parking spaces, but I mean, yeah, those three parking spaces can be a bit tight.
I think we should just express a concern about the parking and that the plans aren't clear as to where they're going to access. But I don't use contracts.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Is that right, Matthew? 220934, which is London Vale House Hurricane Way. This is an extension, a three storey linked extension to the east wing of the existing building. And this is a reapplication because the previous application expired. We didn't like it because it overlooks the nursery and it's not really the best place. But really, I'm looking for your comments really. Do we just come back with the same comments we had last time?
Same comments.
I think last time the nursery themselves made the comment that it rehomed. It wasn't just ours.
No, it wasn't.
The thing I would say about it is this statement of community engagement in that planning application actually says two stories, whereas the application is for three stories. Also, it is still going to open up the nursery playground. Is it going to take away the access to the refuse bins for residents? No.
So have we minded to refuse? I think we had most of those items last time, but I think we'll just double check, I think, just. Just not sure maybe, obviously, anything. So 220975 is Unit 9, Base 329, Headley Road East. This is to do with the new veterinary building that's taken over from, I'm not sure who was there before, but there was a small business there before. And this is all to do with some changes with regards to positioning the air conditioning units. My only comment has been the noise that it generated, but it's in the middle of an industrial space. I don't think there's going to be too many issues. Carol's asked about parking spaces. There seems to be an awful lot of parking there, but how many is allocated to the vets? I don't know. And how many will be free when people want to go to the vets? I don't know.
Not yet. The plan, it doesn't seem to affect the park in total.
I didn't think it did, no. Because I would have thought, because I've already got approval to, for change of view, so I would have thought they would have taken that into account.
I think it was that you've got people coming in to a point and coming out again. Whereas if it's a business, it's probably less likely to have that in and out. So that's, I'm not, not willing to do it.
So we don't have a problem there? Right. Whoops, 55 Nun Drive, which is 221036. Someone wants to build a garage. Set back for the front of the house.
That's hard. Have to put a car in. That's what happens.
Oh, right.
That's why people use garages, you know.
Must be some new idea, but this is first, first time I think I've seen one of these range. So we've got no objection to that? No? Okay. Right. 221052, which is 25 Woodlands Avenue. This is the erection of a pitched roof, front canopy, new porch, single storey extension, loft conversion. Both neighbours already had it extended to the roof space to create additional accommodation. Flat roof gables, west side gable windows may look onto neighbour windows at the same floor. But the new extension to the rear appears to be smaller than the previous build which is already in place. Comments back, obscured glass being used, large windows at rear may create overlooking floor to ceiling. And another comment, considering what we sometimes see on Woodlands, I think that this looks nice.
It's quite tasteful, eh?
I'd welcome any comments, Carol.
Yeah, I don't know if Matt could put it up on the screen because that's, the overlooking wasn't from the side because they are, it is obscured glass, but there are huge windows opening on the back, giving ample opportunity for overlooking. I'm just a bit concerned about it. That's the next one. That's it. So you've got those, full to seating birch down there. So, but it'll be interesting, hear other people's comments. The neighbours don't seem concerned, so maybe this.
My main concern was the fact that there are windows in the adjoining property, which they can almost put their hand out the window and shake hands, I think. On those flat roof gables, that's really nice. I didn't think that the back was too much of an issue. Because I thought, any, any other properties was quite a way away.
He said, yeah, look into the neighbour's garden, so that was all.
It's like having a Juliet balcony or something sticking out a little bit, slightly different to. It looks to be flush. Are we happy with that one then, or? We are, thank you. 221116, 78 Bruce Road. This is a replacement with adjoining garage with a two storey extension. And I've said, this is an end terrace and there are three garages between 78 and its neighbour, two to remain. So I don't know whether 78 owns one of those two, or whether they're both owned by the neighbour, or whether there's a garage which is owned by another, another house in the middle of the block. And there's a new fourth bedroom and they're extending the third. Parking reduced could cause parking issues. Those really might, might comment. We've got parking concerns from Carol and no objections elsewhere.
I'm just saying, parking concerns, I don't think it's enough to refuse it.
So we're happy with that subject, parking?
So there's no parking over there.
Okay, so they've got no objection, however. We do need to make sure the parking is, is adequate. 22114, 14 Godstone Close. This is a conversion of a garage into habitable space. It's the end of a cul-de-sac with a turning circle that may be affected if on-site parking is reduced by this application. No other obvious issues. Comment from Carol about maintaining the turning circle. And the other comment is no objection. So my only, my only comment really was to do with the fact that it's literally on the turning circle.
I don't think we should refuse it, but I think we should send a comment about the turning circle.
Just waiting for Matthew to finish. Right, okay. Right. 221165, Six Ham Close, retrospective. First floor extension of 1500 mil to bedroom three only, and it's within the existing building footprint. And I don't see any problems unless there's one with the neighbour. And I've got no comment or one as a usual objective to retrospective that applications, but no complaint as long as it's well done. So it looked, it looked okay. Are we happy with that? Thank you. 221172.
I think we missed 221146.
Yeah, I think we've missed one, 221146.
I do apologise.
Skipping through the agenda.
16, 22. I must have touched the, the uplink a bit too quick. 221146, 163 Colman's Moor. Single storey rear extension, wider than the building footprint, as it extends partly to the existing rear store. And this is beyond the depth of the neighbour at 161, so it shouldn't really affect him. Caryl's comment, plan shows five cars scattered across the site. No additional bedrooms, so parking wasn't an issue. And Richard has said no objection. So is anybody else that is interested in that? So are we happy with that one? Okay, thank you. Right, I forgot what I'm up to now.
You're now up, 221172.
28 Bruce Road. Right. This is demolition of the garage and adjustment to hard standard following planning application approval, 214113. The parking drawing shows space for three cars, but only two are workable because the other ones literally boxed in. The application is grant, previous application is granted, subject to a change to access arrangements and surface of the parking area, but I'm not sure this fully answers those questions.
Now, I think we should say that the parking still needs to be addressed.
Anybody else got any comments to raise on that?
Just the parking.
Yeah. So we don't think that that's been addressed fully. Because they certainly haven't changed the access, from what I can see. They have, they're only a little bit away. Okay. And the last one is 221193, which is 232 London Bridge Road. This is a rear extension, forward through the house, removing a small rear shed. And this is actually adjacent to Addington Gardens, so unless you're driving down Addington Gardens, I don't think you'll, you'll actually see, you'll see the extension. So anybody got any comments they want to, to raise on that? Are we happy with that one? Okay, thank you. Right, that's, that's the end of the current planning applications. We can then move on to item five, which is planning decisions, which is on page 13. So we can cut with here that they don't agree with us on. Which is 60 Bruce Road. Which obviously we were happy with, 19 Fairwater. Perhaps it's to do with the front extension. Always, always potential issue. And also, 220267, approved, although we weren't too, too impressed with it. And Five Selkirk Close, which is a conversion of a garage. And the rest have been happy with. So do you want to make any comments on that, or just happy to know that? Item six is just to note that there's a planning appeal. The land at the north-east of Roxall Drive. And this is the installation of a 20 metre high one upon. I think we, we had quite a lengthy discussion on that, I seem to recall a couple of months back, where we weren't too impressed by putting in the park, I should think. So that's gone to appeal, doesn't it, Wokingham?
Yeah, I don't think any change wishes. Comments should be the same.
I mean, it's just for us to know, so just really notice that it's gone to appeal. They'll probably win because they seem to be able to do what they like.
The request at the end of the, for the agenda item is that members are asked to consider whether they wish to make any additions.
I'm sorry, just that.
The, the appeal itself offers opportunity if anyone who has responded wants to change or revoke any comments.
Do you remember where our comments were?
Yeah, they're, they're in the agenda there. So they're, they're stays in the middle of it. So our response below. So after that appeal, the, the response we submitted on the 25th of March 2021 was.
So it's the reduction of available green space for recreation. Impact on local biodiversity. Safety of park users during construction. Dominate the skyline nearby dwarf trees and houses and have a negative impact on the local amenity for the living. So if there's anything else we would like to add?
I think there's only one thing that was mentioned to me about the proximity of it to the skate park and the park. So it's not just impacting residents walking through there, it's a children's play space. If we've got the opportunity to add, I think that would be that's all.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Item seven, neighbour consultation scheme. Just really to note the applications with Cavisham Park. I'm not sure Pepper Road is not in our borough. There's some works to do with Cavisham Park, which is probably far enough away, so we just probably need to be aware of that. Do you need to make any comments? Item eight is just noting that some tree preservation orders. Woodlands 3147, Nightingale Road, Woodley. And there's a beach and there's a crown reduction of two to three metres all red, so let's just note. Application, sorry, item nine, this is application for new premises licence for Indus Fresh Shop by London Vale Centre, Woodley. A new Cavisham's licence for Indus Fresh Shop. Have you got any comment, Carol?
Yeah, I was concerned about the opening hours that they've done the application for, open until 2200, yes, 2200. But then I thought Tesco's also sell drinks, do they not? So one couldn't say no to one, not to the other.
Not to the other.
That, I think that area is kind of ripe for getting some drinks and loitering around and causing nuisance. But I don't know how one would say that or how, you know, that would be a good enough reason to object to the licence. But those opening hours do concern me.
Carol?
I didn't quite catch the, your concern there, Carol.
Sorry, I was saying it's opening hours, so open till 7 till 2200.
Tesco's are the long time.
As well, yes. But where this where this shop is, is within that sort of quadrangle, if you like. And I say, I don't think we can say anything about it, but worries me that they'll be sort of loitering and drinking and.
Yeah, but there's a pizza up there as well. So I don't think that can be determined by the licensing.
No, no, that's what I said. It's a concern I wanted to express, but I don't think.
Just rather five licensing objectives, I don't know if it's on that basis, but in this instance, I.
So what comments, if any?
Never got a comment. It's already there, but it's just a shop that's a pizza.
We can minimize our concern, but we don't need to send it anywhere.
Item ten, Twyford Parish Council consultant and draft neighbourhood plan. And really, we should be, if you want to, you can look at that in supporting documents. And there's a link there which we can view it. Alex, right, twelfth, yes?
Yeah, I noticed you have the map of the development, of the plan, David's plan. I'm quite intrigued, there's a route for presumably pedestrians, possibly cyclists, which heads from the south side of Twyford Station, westward direction, presumably bridges, the log and the old river. Then it goes into Charville, obviously not subject to this particular plan. But assuming that Charville, this carries on as far as Park Lane. You've got potential cycle route from the north end of the airfield to Twyford Station. So I'm quite interested in this, I think. Who should be talking with Charville, Twyford and working borough to see this potential cycle route? I mean, say it comes out, it comes out in Park Lane, you go down Park Lane, Landset Lane, Orford Quaid Road, Pedder Silver Lane, and then you're at the top end of the airfield. It's about three kilometres to the station. So assuming there is a route in mind that carries on into Charville as far as Park Lane. I think we should pursue this. And so you talk to Charville, talk to Twyford, talk to working borough and see if this is a candidate for cycle one.
Sorry, Keith, yes?
Yeah, further to that, Alex, the idea of that link has already been submitted by a variety of people, including myself. So that's just additional information. So I actually would endorse what Alex is saying that we should link up with Charville and Twyford. Because it is an obvious route, it's been mentioned on social media a lot as well.
Too produced assaultive person.
It's too obvious, isn't it?
Have you got any other comments? So I think the general consensus is that we need to make sure that they take into account the route from Twyford to Charville. And then it becomes a strong, a strong talking point to to get some cycle ways in. Do you need to say anything else?
Well, I I think we may be a bit more proactive than that, right, to Twyford Parish Council? And ask them what if, you know, what plans there are for a cycle route, if any, and copy it to Charville. And see if we get a response on that.
Could do that as a response to the to the neighbour pangs that are asking for responses. So I can say that the committee are obviously interested in the potential of a of a cycle route through from Woodley on this. So please contact us and let Charville know that we've done that as well.
Yes, please. Good. Together with, this should be a classic agenda item for the cycling subcommittee.
Okay, want to see your notes on that or? So can we move on to item eleven, which is Bournemouth, SLV tree planting? It's a notice on page twenty seven. I think Carol, you visited it.
Yeah, I remember the friends of Bournemouth Open Space and we've been working on this for the last year a bit. Which is where this plan has come from, it's from the group of us rather than working them. Treading, not treading, sort of going over the site again and again and trying to work out ways to improve it. And it is that area that our bit, Bournemouth Park is one end, just by Town Lane. And then coming through to the plant builds at Bournemouth Open Space. So this is really, you know, we're delighted about what's happened with this. And we have a meeting, we have our plan. And hopefully it's if the money stays there or exists, that we might get this done in the next planting season. But I'll certainly be at the the visit.
Do you have a Carol, I think you said? We've got any other comments? This really supported, supported what's been offered. Carol's identifying. Item twelve, Speedwatch.
Thank you. You will be pleased to know, I'm sure, that I found me in contact with PCD Turner last Thursday. But things, knowing this meeting is tonight, I've held off apart from the necessaries. So the Speedwatch, Woodley Speedwatch programme is now up and running on the police system. I have been through the videos, which they say will take thirty minutes, and done the test. Which I've passed, so I'm now down on that. But we can't go out and actually do anything until such time as I have two volunteers who are also trained. So I've got nine volunteers at the moment. It's my intention to meet them this week, advising them that we are now set up. And try and arrange a meeting where I can go through all the procedures with the volunteers. But before they go out, they have got to pass the training. And some of those volunteers may not have access to the internet. So that's a problem I have to come across when I know the overall situation. We have discussed setting up a working party. But as the Speedwatch rules are set in stone by the police. It's a waste of time having four or five people on a working party discussing policy that you can't change. The policy is already enforced. But I would be grateful if there are two, possibly three volunteers on this committee who can join me in arranging sites to get the data logger up in first instance. Help in getting the data logger up on the brackets on the lamp posts. So that we can actually get up to date information. The information available so far is two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, way, way out of date. We really do need up to date information. Once that is done and we have the two volunteers. We must have the signpost mats indicating that coming into the Speedwatch area. They must be up on every entrance road into Woodley. You only need to miss one and someone say, oh, I came down that road, you can't touch it. So we need those signs up as soon as possible, please, Matt. At every entrance road into Woodley to say that they are entering the Speedwatch area.
On that point, I did a map of all the nine entry points on roads in, so I have got that mapped. I've liaised on the costs with Working Borough Council, so the highways link in there, has told me how much and has done it for the people. So what I can do is go ahead and basically send them back.
To have a permission from S and R, is that being good, please?
The funding was approved, wasn't it, in January? And the funding was.
The cost will probably be within your normal limit without approval, but there has been approval.
A thousand pounds approved and I think I was quoted.
Anyway, so I don't think that necessarily would be an issue.
I think WBC quoted seventy two pounds per sign, so for nine signs that.
So that is actually well within officers' limits for making expenditure without referring back. I'm just saying it shouldn't today, I think.
Moving on from that, we need to arrange training for people operating the camera. So that they know how to operate it. I need to train themselves as well. So I need to come in sometime, place and go to play with the camera and get the workings of it. So that then will be done. We need the list of what roads we're going to do. Once we've got a list of roads, then it's a matter of sending out intention to have the camera in operation on that road at that time, on that date. The police then do a risk assessment for us. And it's them that have to finally say, yes, you can do it, no, you can't do it. And one of the things behind that is that a health and safety risk assessment has got to be carried out. Because amongst other things, people operating the camera have got to have the ability to escape. So, you know, purely simply, a nervous driver coming down, sees the speed camera, brakes quickly and veers off the road. The people operating the camera have got to have the ability to escape from that situation. So it means, going to mean in some instances, getting agreement from residents to use their driveway. So that, you know, they can jump back into the garden and they're sure that they're away from the situation. There is so much to this, excuse me, I haven't had the time to build a definitive list of items. But subject to people's agreement, as I said, the site is now set up as Woodley Speedwatch. I do want to get it out on social media, it's a matter of urgency. So that the residents of Woodley are aware of the Speedwatch programme and are able to volunteer if they so wish. There have been, I know, I know the Conservative councils have had many people on their cameras and asked about Speedwatch. And I'm certain the opposing parties have also had it on their run around. So bring it to everyone's attention and perhaps we can get something on the town council site as well, Kevin. To that effect, and then we can move forward. As I said, I don't think there's a need for a four week working party. But there is certainly need to have two or three volunteers to help. I mean, I'm only sure, I can't go up the top of the step, I'm rich.
I'll be sure you have a ladder.
But yeah, if anyone is prepared to volunteer, it would be great. And it would also give us the chance to link up with residents, we know, with councils, other councils, town councillors, borough councils, et cetera. And find out where the residents are themselves and complaining about speeding issues. Because we can quickly get that sorted by putting the data logger up on that road. Other than that, I've really got nothing further to say with it, but Carol, I see you've got your head up there.
Yes, it's just that you'd asked about a couple of volunteers on this committee. I don't think we need to restrict it to this committee and I think we should spread that quite wide.
As long as I've got at least two people that I can say, all right, let's have a chat. We're going to put the data logger, we're going to put this, that and the other. And then have the people who are there available to come and set it up, that's fine. Whether they come from this committee, leisure, S and R, or even, yeah, volunteers. But, you know, I would like a couple of people backing up. And then, of course, from then on, it'll be a matter of us reporting to this committee each each meeting.
Yeah, first of all, can I put on my on record my great thanks for David to pick this up? Having been inter- involved in it right at the beginning, I know how complex and how difficult and how intertwined everything is. So can I say thank you for doing that? Two comments, everybody should realise, when we talk about Speedwatch, that does not include the, what do you call it? The the radar system, all right? It's only the camera. So when David says you've got to have training to use, you know, training to use it, it's the camera. It's not the recording device. That can go on at any time without any involvement, please aren't interested in that, okay? Because they just say, right, you're going to go to road A, that's fine, get your camera out, bang. Whereas the recording device, in theory, is a filter. Because everybody will say, my road's got speeding. The reality is, that's not true. And the recording device is the first point of filtering based on the data, one week's data, that can actually say, do you know what, it isn't actually there. You've got six cars in a day that did over ten, but on all the other times it was thirty. So that can go on almost immediately, it can go on tomorrow. The other point I just wanted to raise, and David and I have had a conversation about this as well, is the question of how are you going to decide or who decides which road you're going to put the recording device on? Because once it gets out and well known, you will get a dozen, two dozen, three dozen roads where residents will want to say, can you do it in my road? And there needs to be developed, this is my view anyway, and what we tried before, develop a set of criteria. Either a set of criteria or a small subcommittee, because we don't have working groups anymore, unless it's a task and finish one. A subcommittee that will effectively do that filtering based on a set of, at the moment, unknown criteria. That then covers the backs of councillors and the town council. When somebody from Acacia Avenue said, I asked you to do Speedwatch on my road and you're not doing it. You can turn around and say, this is why we're not doing it, because of it failed criteria one, two, three, four, whatever. That, I think, needs quite some thought and relative urgency to work out how that's going to. Now, it might be this committee, it could be a subcommittee of people. You need to think about it and decide on it. Well, we need to do it before the data logger, because the data logger will, in theory, should only go on the roads that have been eternally approved for it. So my example, Acacia Garden, you wouldn't put the data logger up there because it wouldn't get through the criteria.
There's one other thing on this, that when the camera is in operation, there's got to be two people in attendance. there's got to be two people in attendance, one operating the camera and one taking notes. The person taking notes has probably got the worst job of the lot because they need to record the time, the place, the date, the make of car, registration and the tonne of vehicles. No, it doesn't got, and the colour of the vehicle. The camera will pick up the thing, but it's got to be double checked. The two people have got to be very.
When I went to Finchance, the camera did that.
But unfortunately, so, Finchance is not out of that system and have been forced over into the new system which has just been introduced. So that's going to be the job of the second person, gets catching up on the time.
So in that case, it'd be unfair for one person to do it as they find out.
Wouldn't it, one person isn't allowed to do it.
No, one person to, to write the registration card is in case another person comes to do it. Then it's all about three people. Not two, and I'm doing the camera and two doing the registrations.
Yeah. Where it's, where it's up on the lamp post, where the camera's up on the lamp post, albeit handheld, you must have three people.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But, but under the new rules, if it's a standing camera and a tripod, two people are expected to operate. So that, that's the situation at the moment. I will proceed with it as quickly as possible and hopefully I can say that we are ready to go out with the camera for the term of the next meeting. Don't hold your breath.
So do you have any volunteers?
I don't mind helping stick a data logger up a ladder post. I suspect my usefulness during the day and my, my worry is my availability, but if I can be of any use, I will be.
Yeah, most certainly.
Can I, Richard, the data logger goes for a week, all right? So it can go up in the early morning, first in the morning, because it's going to be there for seven days.
That's what I figured, that was my understanding of it, but yeah, it's always, it's fine to go up on a Wednesday night at sort of seven PM when I've finished work, got the kids in bed, right, and stuff, it's fine. Let somebody hold from the ladder.
That'd be lovely, thank you, Richard.
So we should send around, robbing round to all the councillors and asking for assistance if you want to, to others. Can we do that?
Am I excessively highlighting that? Thank you very much.
David, if you are struggling to get that second person, as an absolute last resort, I'll, I'll, I'll be that second person, but it has to be absolute last resort just because of all the other things that I'm doing and my wife wants to see me occasionally.
Sorry, I'm thinking of one person as well here at the moment, as long as it, or you can help as much as you can.
But if you get to a situation where you've got two people and one drops out at the last minute, contact me and if I'm free, I'll come and join you in the lobby of it.
I do appreciate that, really. But thank you, Keith.
Anybody else want to say anything on that now? Item thirteen, early station footbridge. All I know is that the next meeting is likely to take place in May, which time I would hope we will, we'll either have a meeting or we'll know when the report of the condition of the bridge is going to be, is going to be documented. Because that should be programmed for this year, that's something we know, and that's a close up inspection, so it's likely that they'll close the road for a while, I guess, because significantly it's elevated work platforms and all sorts of other things, because they're going to be very close to it to, to actually see what it's like. After that, I assume we'll need to try to push them, to try to get more information about the likelihood that people actually use it on the bridge if, if you've got what is virtually half a mile of a walk or half a mile to push to actually get from one side to the other.
Be no problem for cyclists.
Sorry?
Be no problem for cyclists.
No problem for cyclists, no. Unless it's just a staircase, but I don't think that's. Let's anticipate it. Okay. Move on, item fourteen, community issues.
Yes, I'd like to bring up the issue of the bridge, the old Hall Bridge going across the old river Loden. So if you go into the Loden Park Estate and walk across the area there by the bird hides, et cetera, you can't get any further, you can't get across the bridge because they've closed off the, um, the Hall Bridge there. It's deemed to be unsafe, it looks fine to me for pedestrians, but there you are. What it does, it prevents access beyond the river over towards Hurst and Denton Barrages and works the other way, it's very frustrating when you walk along the other side and you can see where you want to get to and you can't. Rumour has it that it is a matter of ownership of land with Summerlees and one other. And I just think instead of keep accepting that this isn't going to happen because, you know, there's an objection with the ownership. There is money in the budget for that, always provided for that way back when with the planning application for Loden Park. And I would like the town council to try and set up a meeting with Woking Borough and Summerlees and any other landowner and just get this out into the open and work out why on earth something can't happen. And if, you know, what we want to happen can't, whether there's any other options. I still think that Hall Bridge is okay for pedestrian traffic or cyclists, it took ten time lorries before, so. But I'm no structural engineer, so that was my proposal, if we could set up a meeting.
Any other issues? Any comments on Carol's suggestion? Can we, can we pursue that?
Yeah, I'm making that, who do we want the meeting to be between?
It's got to be Woking Borough.
We have to put the tweet, so from our, our end it will be.
Oh, I see. Let's see if we can set up a meeting first.
Oh, I just, I'm just wondering if we set up a meeting but no one's available to be from our end, that would be a bit, a bit problematic.
I'll be available anytime, make sure.
Depending on the time, no trouble.
Then, why don't you try and arrange it for, to line up with the, this meeting? Because I'm, I'm sure it's of interest of all the town councillors here and you meet once a month, so it's relatively frequently. And get them to come, get Woking Borough to come and present what this current situation is and what the blocks are and what they're doing to remove the blocks, all, all the sort of things that Carol was sort of suggesting.
No problem with that. Is there a question of ownership first, as they say?
It is the ownership, but I, I think that's, I'd like to know how difficult and obstacle that is. And I just keep hearing too many different stories.
Do you think it's worth just asking, asking most of what they think the ownership is of the land first before we try and do everything else?
Yeah, I think.
Otherwise we end up with a lot of people coming.
I mean, there's two options, either we ask Woking what they know, which is what merely Keith is saying, come into a meeting, or we find out who the other people are involved and then have the meeting. I think it's a matter of putting feeders out of the net.
Yes, so can you, can you, can you work it carefully, so you're asking for a meeting at the same time you want to know who should you ask for a meeting? I suppose that's what you're saying.
If I can, I'll be doing that just as well.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, though, thank you.
Item fifteen is highways issues, apart from the road surfaces which are pretty dire.
They've been opening up for a while, I think. They said there's nothing new been done for this one, is that?
I did see a sign up the other day, it said uneven road.
There'd been any rain in Woodley.
That's the issue, the nine entrances to Woodley.
Yes, I think the main, the main feeder roads into Woodley are showing signs of way up town, I think. I mean, more industrial units being put up, I'm just a bit concerned that they're going to get even worse if you get a whole load of empty traffic coming down. I mean, lorries and things. Will you want to make any comments on that? Road surface, I think there's a big plan out, isn't there, from what I'm going to do with the road, I think, I see.
Oh, it's okay, we're almost finished now.
Okay, move on to item sixteen then, so you should have had the M E two newsletter and the C C B action for all bulletins emailed to you from last year. Item seventeen, future agenda items, since we've already spoken about Speedwatch. What else do we need to, to bring to everybody's attention? Publicity and website, item eighteen.
Speedwatch.
So it's Speedwatch, yeah. In nineteen nineteen, force of circumstances, ages uncertain, I'll say one, just so you know. So we've got eighteen porkback animals for ice conversion of a loft, one eighty-four Longbridge Road, additional window, land to the south of Sanford Farm Cottage, TPO, trees removed without permission. The water side, Fairwater Drive, floodlights on puddles without planning permission, the wattage too bright. Eighty-one Longbridge Road, a large building has been partly built in the garden without planning permission. Seventy-nine Longbridge Road, large outbuilding without planning permission. Sixty-seven Woodlands, large outbuilding rear garden without planning permission and possibly damage to TPOs. Six Malone Road Woodley, rear extension, changing the garage to a room without planning permission. And the enclosures are seventy-four House Drive Garage Conversion without planning permission, application submitted. Seventy-nine Bruce Road, business operating with a high perple, not expedient. Two Oak Drive, building worked and often accordance with approved plans, application submitted. Loden Park, perimeter road, Elm Drive and Jasmine Square Landstate relating to previous applications of no breach. Forty Austin Road, large construction to rear property, no planning application, no breach. Thirty-eight and forty Weeble Drive, enclosure of open green space, no breach. I don't know whether that was meety land or not. Okay, well, I'll, I'll shoot, so do you need to move on, I say, very much?